We're going to go ahead and start the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, August the 4th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers. Our invocation tonight will be from youth pastor Jared Goodhue from the First Baptist Church. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you so much for this opportunity tonight to gather as a community. We thank you for the opportunity that you have given us to pray with supplications and intercessions and thanksgivings for our officers and leaders. Lord, we pray that by praying for them, that they would lead us in a peaceful and quiet life, a life that is filled with dignity and godliness. Lord, that we might live out your example to love those around us, to love our neighbors just as you have loved us. We thank you for loving us first, for showing us how to live a life that is filled with justice and truth, in the same way it is filled with grace and mercy. Lord, we thank you for bringing us together in this community and pray that we would honor you in the way that we love others in our actions, our words, our deeds, our thoughts. And, Lord, that we would live a life that is glorifying to you. And it is in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
(Inaudible) United States of America, to the Republic which is in us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Here.
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 Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, item six, our citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Steve, you want to come on up? Steve?
May I?
Yep. Go ahead and give your name and address for the record.
My name is Steve Harris.
Your address for the record.
1501 Vine, Papa Bluff. Since October the, or I'm sorry, July the 4th, we've had three vehicles broken into on our street. One of those was mine Friday night. All three of us have learned that we need to lock our car doors because they're all outside. So with that in mind, we have some homeless people living in a shelter they've created that is located behind Skate City, to the left of the big cellphone tower. They've created this thing with pallets from Ellis Battery. They told us that they had a barbecue grill, a Weber grill, out behind so they could cook out there at Ellis. Well, they stole it, but they brought it back after they broke it. This thing is covered in tarpaulins. I had an officer, Sutton, came by my house Saturday morning, and he was to write a report. And I told him about all these people living up the hill from me. And he said he'd go back there, and he wound up arresting one of the two people that were in there. And it's my understanding that the city now has an ordinance that you can't have a tent without a permit. Is that, yes, that's what I was told by Papa Bluff. Well, how do we get rid of this? I feel bad for these people. If they choose to live in this squalor, okay. But I don't want it to affect all of us up and down the street. One of my neighbors went up there earlier in the spring and put up a no trespassing sign, and they scared her to death. She won't go near that place anymore, walking her dog. So what do we do about this problem? Can we get them out of these shelters that they choose to live in and then dismantle these shelters and get rid of them? Officer Sutton said that also, he said they've got 12 Walmart grocery carts there that are worth 900 bucks apiece. And yet, he says Walmart won't prosecute these people, and it's a felony for one cart to go away. So I don't know what to do about it. I just have to make this known to you guys if you don't know about it. I've had to buy cameras, you know? Okay, it's where we live in a pretty rough world now, not like it was when I was young. So what can we do? I don't have any, I have no suggestions other than how do we tear that stuff down and get it out of there? Can the city do this? Anybody know?
That's a question.
Well, one thing, the property owner would probably have to file some kind of complaint or something.
Well, Mr. Smith, that's, from what I've learned, and that's very little, the property owner is an elderly lady living in some other place, someplace in the United States, and she's in a nursing home.
Okay, okay.
So if this, I don't know, can you declare it delinquent property and take this stuff out? What can code enforcement do? I mean, if my neighbor's yard gets too high, code enforcement will put a sticker on the door, "Know your yard."
Counselor, do you have any insight on that? Do you have any legal?
Well, I think there are a number of different ways we can approach this. We need more information on it, and thankfully, because of tonight, you've given us some information that we can move on. But I think we'll look at it with a combination of code enforcement and also probably important for us to try to make contact with this landowner or her guardian, if she's in a nursing home, and pursue it from there. But I think with this report tonight, you've given us enough that we can move on it.
Via a neighbor of mine, I'll find out who owns that property. She found out. And someone gave her permission to put this no trespassing sign up. Well, that didn't live a month, you know? They just tore it down and kept going. Okay.
Steve, before you leave there, tell me a little bit more about the property. Is it just a vacant lot? Is it a home? What is it exactly?
It's just a brush pile. It's green short trees back to the power line.
Okay.
That run east and west. Yeah. You can't see it from the street now because of all the, you know, it's summer. In the winter, it's not hard to see.
Does it front on West Pine? Does it front on West Pine? The lot?
It's 75 yards off West Vine.
Okay. Who's got the property in front of it that is on West Pine?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
Is it adjacent to Elston?
No, it's across the street. Skate City is across the street. And behind Skate City is the cell tower.
Okay.
Just west of that is...
So it's on the north side of West Pine?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
Steve, I'll go by there tomorrow and take a look at that. Start with the next step.
I appreciate your time.
Absolutely, thank you. We appreciate it.
I have a comment on that.
Go ahead.
We've just had some discussion today about that very topic, and just right off the bat, you know, there were five different incidents like that around the city to where there are encampments, you know, people living in, you know, makeshift shelters, tents, tarps, that type of thing. So I'd like to see this, you know, what we're looking into legally, and I'd like to see it expanded more to a citywide investigation to find out why we can't go in. Because if we have an ordinance that says you can't camp in the city without a permit, why that can't be addressed, whether it's on private property or on city-owned property or on, you know, landowner property that's, you know, vacant, landowner that doesn't live here. It shouldn't matter if the person or a group of people are camping in the city against that ordinance. So I'd like to see us address that in a wider approach than just this one property that is affecting you, because it's affecting a lot of other people, too.
Does anybody know? Okay, I want to take you to McDonald's South. Turn right south on 142, and down there not very far, there's a building on the left where the Social Security Administration office is. Just past that is Woods, just next door to it. There is a city of homeless people in there. I don't know if that's Papa Bluff or is that Butler County?
Probably in the county there. Yeah, that's probably in the county.
I talked to their security officer, and I said, "Are you aware of what's out there in the woods?" And he said, "Oh, yeah." I said, "Do you have any problems with them because of all their employees parking in the back?" And he said, "Sometimes." But it, I'm not as concerned about that because I don't live near them, but I am about us and my neighbors. So thank you again.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Come on up, Steve.
Steve Halter and Morgan McIntosh with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm at 6110 Greenbrier Drive. A few months ago, our city was honored in recognition for the 50 Best Places to Retire in the United States. Travel and Leisure did a great article on it, as did the DAR. And so we wanted to present this to the city, something hopefully you guys will hang up and be proud of.
Yes.
Very nice.
Yeah, cool.
Very nice.
Just hold it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we're going to go to item seven, our workshop items for discussion. Mr. Jeff Stroder from Busenick Hayrow &amp; Stroder, LLC will appear before the City Council to present the Fiscal Year 2024 Audit for the City of Papa Bluff and Municipal Utilities. Mr. Stroder?
Good evening. I want to thank you all again for the opportunity to do the city's audit. I think you'll find my comments are going to be very familiar. Routine is usually a good thing when it comes to government audits, so surprises are not exactly what we're looking for. So from our perspective, everything went very well this year from the audit, and I came to give you kind of a layperson's description of what you have in your report. So I have three reports on your financial statements, and I'll try to go through those fairly quickly. But the very first report that we have is on your actual financial statements themselves. As part of an audit, my job is to give an opinion on whether or not they are fairly stated and fairly presented in accordance with the rules for government financial statements. And I promise, this is the only sentence I'm going to read to you out of this. I'm not going to stand here and read to you, but I want to make sure I get this wording right. But in our opinion, the financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining information present fairly in all material respects the financial position, changes in financial position and cash flows in accordance with the modified cash basis of accounting. Now, that sentence is what makes it an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. That's the opinion you want on your financial statements. Now, the report goes on to explain quite a bit of information. It tells what the city's responsibilities for the financial statements are, tells what my responsibilities as the auditor are. It's fascinating information, but I'll let you look at that on your own time, not bore you with the details. It concludes by explaining that there's additional information in this document that you have put together for the audit that's over and above what the basic financial statements are. And it explains that we have applied our audit procedures to the other information as well, and that we extend our opinion to the other schedules and the other information. And part of that includes the schedule of federal expenditures, which I'll come back to in a minute. The last part of the report explains that whenever I conduct an audit in accordance with government auditing standards, I'm responsible for a second report that we have to issue. Now, that report, it explains our work we have done in regard to your internal controls. The internal controls over the financial statements are how do we accumulate transactions that take place to be able to put them together into a set of financial statements, and whether or not those processes, how they work. Now, we don't actually issue an opinion on those internal controls, but I have to understand how they're designed and whether or not they're working to be able to conduct my audit. So while I'm obtaining that understanding, if I would find something that I would consider to be a deficiency, this is where I would report that. So unfortunately, we did have one instance that we did report that we concluded was a material weakness. And that came about because when we were applying our tests, we found that, and to be able to put that clean opinion that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, we found two things that hadn't been recorded correctly. So we made recommendations for significant adjustments to the financial statements. And one had to do with debt proceeds and capital expenditures of about $233,000 of the Capital Improvements Fund hadn't been recorded. We didn't question the transactions. The transactions were done right. They were handled properly. They just weren't recorded in the financial statements the way they needed to be. So, you know, I didn't want to mislead or make anybody think that the money wasn't handled right. It just wasn't, it didn't get recorded where it needed to go. The second part was loan proceeds and capital expenditures for the Highway 67 Fund. Those loan proceeds were a little over $11 million, and it just didn't get recorded. So the transactions were all taking place by the bank on your behalf, which was the way it was supposed to work. That was the way the whole thing was intended to be done. We just didn't get the transactions recorded in the financial statements. So again, I didn't want to mislead anybody and make anybody think the money wasn't handled properly. It was handled the way it was supposed to. It was just kind of the record-keeping end of it. So that's the part that we had on internal controls. The second part of that report that I issue has to do with the city's compliance with various laws and regulations, contracts, grant agreements, things like that that are of financial nature that we're looking at for your compliance. And of all of the tests that we performed, the only thing that we wanted to mention here was that several of the funds either had over expended their budget or they didn't have a budget adopted in the first place. So that, too, with our test, we didn't have any instances of problems with how the money was spent. It was just that it was more than what was authorized in the budget. So that was our recommendation, was to either appropriately amend those budgets at the end of the year or keep the expenditures within the limits. So the rest of the financial statements, I mean, I don't normally stand here and go back over the details of the financial information. I know you're aware of your financial condition. We found that they were, that various funds were stable, financial condition was nothing that caused alarms or concerns, in our opinion. The last part of our report has to do with your federal expenditures. You've heard me talk before, so you probably remember that whenever you spend more than $750,000 in federal grant money, it triggers a whole other level of audit that we're required to do, basically for the federal government, to let them know about how you're expending their money. So again, there's two parts to this report. The first is compliance. Now, we're supposed to test compliance for at least 40% of the federal dollars. Now, your total federal dollars in expenditures for the year were a little over $4.8 million. And 3.2 of that was the coronavirus money, the ARPA money. So that's where we focused our time, was on that grant. And we were testing for compliance with things like allowable costs, real property management reporting, special tests that the federal government, you know, did you spend the money on what you were supposed to? Did you only spend it on what you were supposed to? Did you prepare reports right? The things like that that you would expect that we're going to be looking at. And we found no instances of noncompliance for any of the tests that we performed. And that's what we reported, that there was an unmodified opinion on compliance. Now, the government wants me to not only say, "Did you comply?", but "Did you have internal controls over each of the compliance requirements we tested?" So it's not just enough for them that you complied with everything. Did you have intentional mechanisms? We had one area where we didn't have an internal control in place, so we did mention that as a weakness in the controls. But we were very clear to point out, there were no instances of noncompliance so that the federal government knows you didn't do anything wrong with their money. But whenever you're going to spend more than $25,000 with one particular vendor, you're responsible to make sure that that vendor is not suspended or debarred from doing business with the federal government. So we had five different vendors who met the requirements. And like I said, all five of them were fine, but we didn't check their status before we actually started paying money to them. So that was the thing that we pointed out, was that we just want to make sure that there's some mechanism there, just to make sure. We, I believe we talked with some of the officials that we were working with. There's more than one way to accomplish this goal. I think we talked about several possible ways, things we could do, just to be able to make sure that these things are fine. And hopefully that'll be not a problem for next year's audit. So that's me trying to be brief with how the audit went. But, you know, if anybody would have any questions about what we did or how we went about it or what we found, I'd be more than happy to try to answer those.
Do you have any questions? Anybody?
I have a question. This, the packet we got to review just came in, you know, over the weekend for me. 219 pages, you know, a lot of it was of you guys, you know, you can't be brief in doing what you do. And it sounded like with me just cursory looking at it, I have no idea, you know, about the accounting procedures that you guys used. But it looks like you're saying we did a good job in accounting for the money that was being spent, but we spent too much over what was, what we had to spend. And in looking at past budgets, it looks like 2022, 2023, and 2024 that I'm looking at here right now, those funds, it says that the city is required to amend the budget prior to actual expenditures. This is out from your report for a given fund, you know, being made that exceeds the officially approved budget for that fund. And so you list all those ones, you said several of them, they're all listed here, and some of those are shockingly large amounts of money. And it says that other funds, additional costs were necessary, but the budget was not amended accordingly. So it says the city is not in compliance with state statute. So what are the ramifications of that? Since we've done this, you know, there's compliance verbiage in the audit that says you need to fix this, and the city says, "We will fix it." And then the next year, they do the same thing. And the next year, they do the same thing. So what are the ramifications of that?
That's a very good question. To my knowledge, there's no negative impact that would happen to the city for not being in compliance with this statute. This is a very common finding for audits that we conduct. I have this conversation with a lot of the cities that we audit. To my knowledge, there's no penalty for this. And one thing I would mention about the dollar amounts, you said that some of the dollar amounts were quite significant. I think the one in particular that was about $11 million had to do with the first finding that I mentioned, where some transactions had not been recorded. So when we get to the end of the year, and all of the expenditures had been made by the bank on your behalf out of...
They balance out.
Exactly. So those had not been recorded. So when we're looking at the comparison to the budget, it looks like we're fine. And then I come in as the auditor and say, "Oh, wait, we got $11 million more in expenditures that you didn't have recorded." So we make that adjustment to put those expenditures on. Now you've got $11 million that you didn't have when you were comparing to the budget at the end of the year. So that, unfortunately, that was kind of like one set of transactions that kind of caught you on two different directions.
Yeah, I appreciate you pointing out how the city staff, you know, did a good job in accounting for all these different funds. I'd just like to say to the rest of the council that we would really expect that once a fund looks like it's going to go in the red, that we need to know about it and amend the budget or change the budget in some way that will, you know, fix that.
Right. Now, and there's, as the attorney could probably explain, there's a lot of different ways to interpret statutes, too. But the way we kind of worded that, I was trying to explain a more conservative side, maybe. I do know that if the state auditor's office were looking at the expenditures, they're going to take the approach that at the moment that you make an expenditure that's over and above what was in the budget, that's the point at which you violate that statute. I know that a lot of places, there's interpreted that even if we went over budget, as long as we amend the budget before the end of the year to accommodate for those additional expenditures that were needed, then there's not a problem. Now, we normally, with our audits, we make sure everybody's aware of the different interpretations, but we kind of look a little bit more on the, as long as you've got it taken care of by the end of the year, we would not make an issue out of it in the audit.
Yeah, that's a different interpretation from the wording that's in the audit.
So there's lots of different ways to look at those. So I'd just like to make sure everybody's aware, though, that probably the most conservative approach would be looking at it the way the state auditors would. You know, if they were to come in here and look at your books, they might make an issue of it sooner than I would. But the way yours were, even at the end of the year, we didn't have the amendments that we needed. So that's why we wanted to make that recommendation.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stroder. Entertain a motion. Entertain a motion to accept this?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks again, Mr. Stroder.
Thank you all very much.
Item B, Ms. Stephanie Knopf, will appear before the City Council to request approval for open containers on Main Street for a downtown dinner-walking tour event to be held on Saturday, October the 18th, 2025. Go ahead, Ms. Knopf.
How are you?
That's fine.
I'm asking for the Entertainment District to be extended through Main Street for the October 18 fundraiser for that night only. We start at 8 o'clock and should be done by 10:00 PM.
Any questions for Ms. Knopf?
I just want to make a comment. I've heard about this project and event, and I think it's great, you know, that originally I thought it'd be a concern. I thought Seatop would be open at the same time, and there'd be some issues going on there. But this is a Saturday event, correct?
Yes.
And so Seatop will be open, so I kind of like the idea.
All right. Everybody good with it, I'm assuming? All right, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knopf. Item C, the City Council will consider a petition to establish a downtown Papa Bluff Community Improvement District. Mr. Steve Halter and Ms. Morgan McIntosh to present.
Appreciate your time. We'll try to keep it pretty brief, but we've been, something we've been working on for five years now. I think we've, this... I think we've, this, Mr. Nodelle, you're the third city manager since we started this process. It has been a long process. It's something that we see as a way to really help get some funds and make funds available to help make improvements downtown. We engaged with legal counsel Shannon Creighton from Gilmore and Bell. She's a kind of a seasoned veteran at this type of thing. She's done these things all over the state. She knows the ins and outs of them. We followed her lead throughout the thing, throughout the process. She's kind of, I think she's kind of adopted our group to help us through this process. It tracks with, just like the other TDD in town, where there's an additional 1% sales tax enacted within the district, the downtown district. It only applies to those who actually charge sales tax. They just pass that on to their customers. They collect that money, and then they pass it on to a fund. There's a five-year plan that we had to establish. We got input from all the, we sent out word to all the business owners downtown, and we said, here are the things that would qualify, that the money could be spent on. We'd like to get your input. We took their input. We just designed a five-year plan for what we'd like to see happen down there. It includes things like infrastructure improvements, supporting our businesses through facade grants and promotions and marketing, public safety and security, community events, green space, and beautification initiatives. And then, so if it's approved, then what happens is those businesses charge that extra 1%. They collect it, it goes to this fund, and then there's a five-person board of which we would be recommending, obviously, people who have businesses in the downtown district. And then also, we would be recommending the city manager be on that as well. Morgan and I aren't on that board, we don't have a say in it. Obviously, I would think that they would probably talk to us about it, but really, the money is designated and has to be used only for the things that are in that plan, strictly to benefit downtown Popper Bluff, and really to see the area improve. We, you know, we hope that everyone will buy into this. We've gotten well over 50% of the property owners down there to approve. We had to go through a very lengthy process. Everything takes time with this process, so it took us several months to just go through and kind of explain it to the business owners and get them to sign the petition. We've checked all the boxes from Shannon, and that's why we're, why we're here right now. I would like to point out that, and I know all of y'all are believers in downtown, but when we're doing the comprehensive planning procedure, one of the survey questions for our community, and we had a lot of, we had a large response from our citizens on what they'd like to see happen in Popper Bluff, and almost 80% of them agreed that they wanted to see improvements in downtown. So I think we have the support downtown. This is just a mechanism that we're allowed to use if you guys approve it, to where we can charge that a little extra, collect that money, and then use that money specifically for downtown improvement.
So you said over 50% of feedback from downtown was positive as far as?
Yeah, so we approached, we just went and started approaching business owners to explain it to them. They had to sign a petition saying that they approved what we were doing, and we, all we had to get was 50%, plus one, once we cleared that, cleared it pretty quickly. I only think we had one or two that even had any issue at all. And I think a lot of the folks, when you say tax, gets a lot of people riled up, and I understand that, but, you know, a lot of the folks that are down there, they don't even charge anything with the sales tax. So, but we had all the, you know, all the main businesses down there are supportive of it, because they know that that little bit will add up over time. It may not be a lot right now, but over the years, I mean, if we'd been doing this 10 years ago, you know, we'd be a lot further along. Just makes it easier to get things, to have funds to get things done downtown.
And I will just add to the mayor's comment. I'd like to thank you, Steve and Morgan, for your leadership on this issue. I'm probably the newest person to this conversation. However, you know, if you look at thriving downtowns across the state of Missouri, those that are thriving, a very, very common attribute is a community investment district such as this. Certainly, as somebody that's not been here very long, I would consider myself perhaps not to be satisfied with the status quo in downtown. So, you know, these are the tools that can help bring transformation. So thank you for your effort on this.
Okay. I've got a question.
Correct.
Okay. We talked a little bit this morning. I appreciate all your efforts, but I was a little surprised, and I had spent some time with the packet, and the city manager kind of gave me some input on this. I was surprised that we're workshopping this before we have the public hearing on the 18th. That's kind of a strange thing.
Yeah, I just, we just follow what the attorney tells us to do. That wasn't a decision that we had to make on it. They, she laid it out exactly how it's done from the statute and-
And we talked a little bit, but who made up this study team? I know you and Morgan were involved, and who else?
Who made up the what?
The study team.
The study? Oh, the Blight Study. Smith and Company worked with us on it, yeah.
So who is the petitioner?
The people who have owned property in the downtown district.
And you said it's well over 51% of the-
Yes.
Was that 51% of the businesses that generate retail sales?
No, of the, of the property owners downtown.
I looked at the list of people that had, that were listed on that, and many of them really don't have anything to do with the CID, you know, with the Community Improvement District, other than they're located there, but they don't generate any revenue towards that. It seems like it should be more of the revenue generating population there.
Yeah, again, go ahead.
Anyone, anyone councilman that owns property within that district could potentially build, develop, or, or, you know, create their, you know, transform their property into a tax generating business, perhaps. And so, you know, it is encompassing, and that's state statute, you know, that anyone that owns property, and many times, when a transportation development district, or a tax increment financing district, or a community improvement district, many times there are no businesses generating sales tax. It'll be a new development, perhaps in a vacant field, or, you know, places like that. So, you know, it certainly tries to encompass property owners that could potentially have a tax generating business.
It looked like in the proposal, that there was a revenue generation of $2 million. Is that over the 27-year period of the-
Actually, the $2 million, I believe, is what we're looking at for the cost of improvements over the 27-year period.
So was there a study done as to what the potential revenue generation would be for CID?
Well, you know, yeah, it's a great question. So you just start off with about $35,000 a year, and then with hopes of, as you make improvements, as more people come and open businesses down there, then there's more people charging things that receive sales tax, and that number just continues to grow. If you just take the $35,000 and multiply it out times 27 years, it's probably, what, 900 and something thousand or whatever? So it's not going to be the 2 million. And that number, that 2 million number, it's tough to tell with all the improvements. It really depends on, you know, what kind of inflation rate we have over the years, what exactly we do, what, you know, we talked about one of the things, a splash pad down there. There's so many different varieties of splash pads, anywhere from, you know, you can spend as much as you want on a splash pad. So there's a lot of different factors in there. But the thing is, if we don't start somewhere, then we're never going to get anywhere on, and I always say that a lot of the things we're doing today, if we were doing those 10, 15 years ago, it's kind of like when we start talking about Highway 67, everyone's like, well, that's never going to happen, that's never going to happen. We've got to start somewhere. And now, here we are, talking about I-57. So, you know, that's all we're trying to do. And as far as the, you know, who signed the petition, that wasn't anything we decided, that's all decided by state statute, and we're just being led by the attorney who does this all over the state.
So it's the, not the business owners, but the property owners?
Property owners, Greg.
Okay, all right. I have a couple more questions, if it's okay. I don't usually talk this much.
No, you're fine.
How will this board differ from the downtown Popper Bluff Board?
Yeah, so it's a great question, another great question. There'll be five, and it's all laid out. I don't know, Mr. Nodelle, if you're able to-
Yeah, but I mean, how will this board and that board differ?
Well, for instance, on the downtown, there is going to be a lot of similarities, but I don't think of the ones that we came up with, I don't know that there's much overlap at all.
What do you mean, the ones you came up with?
Well, the ones that we've been talking about. We haven't approved any of them.
Yeah, because we haven't approved any of them.
Right, right. But again, there's, it's very specific guidelines. We don't, we don't have a choice. It has to be a property owner, it has to be someone who's a Missouri resident, it has to be someone who's a US citizen, it has to be someone 21 years or older.
Right. One more question, and that's it. I know on some of the CID and the TIF locations, they don't have to tell us what they've used the money for. And I would hope that would not be that way with this.
Yeah, it's, again, we don't, we don't have that option. We can only use it for, well, I say we, the board, the Sid Board can only use it for what's in the plan and what's directed by the state statute. You can't just go out and say, well, I'm going to go put a new highway on 67 or whatever.
Well, I know the one over on-
Yeah, and the city manager will most likely be on the board as well.
The one over on Sycamore, in that area, the property owners are the ones that manage it, and they do with-
Sure.
Right. So, and I understand that, that's only their area and their business. But this is a larger area and more businesses. I was just concerned.
Is that all you?
Okay.
Another, another one. Have you had meetings with the downtown Popper Bluff Board about this?
Oh, yeah, we've been talking about it for five years or more, actually. It was part of a strategic plan that we've done. It was brought up when we hired experts to come in to do a strategic plan. Every time, they said that we need to utilize the resources that are available to us, such as a community improvement district. So this isn't something that we just, Morgan and I woke up one day and say, yeah, let's have a Sid. I mean, we've, we've really, it's been a long process. We would have liked it to go a lot faster, but also know that, you know, sometimes when you go through and take your time and go step by step, you learn things. And you, you know, I think we're to the point now where I think it's going to be a big benefit for our downtown area.
So was the downtown Popper Bluff Board, did they help craft that five-year plan and those projects that are listed?
Yes. Well, it's been discussed, and Morgan's here from our board, he can, he can attest, it's been discussed several meetings throughout the years.
And the other, there's a commission, there's a Popper Bluff Historical Preservation Commission. Would they be involved in the approval of, Morgan's shaking her head here, so is that the Historical Preservation Commission, are they excluded from completion of these projects that are listed in the CID?
Would they be excluded from?
Yeah, yeah. What role do they play?
Well, I don't, we would just, again, we would just follow the state statute if it, if there's a place for them. I haven't seen and-
I would say if there's a project that, that impacts property of historical significance, they would certainly be involved in that process, as they would, you know, whether that's a project with community improvement district dollars, or whether that's a project with private dollars, you know, if it is of historic significance and needs their input, then they would have it.
So there was some concern that was expressed about, one of the, one of the issues on the five-year plan was demolition of buildings downtown. So is that, were there specific buildings downtown that were posed to be demolished? Or is this just kind of out there?
I don't think we have anything specific, but, I mean, I think we're all one team, whether it's the historical group, or whether it's the downtown Popper Bluff, Inc., or whether it's the newly created downtown Sid Board. I think everyone just wants to see improvements made downtown, so.
Well, I would agree with that. It just seems like there's, this is starting to get fragmented so much that not, you know, there might be people or organizations or boards or commissions that are left out of the process here.
Well, it definitely isn't our intentions. We want to hear from everyone.
I wouldn't think it'd be an intention, I just think it might be an unintended consequence.
Yeah. Well, I think the last two, I know the last, well, I guess every single downtown strategic plan I've been involved in, we've opened it up to everyone in the community, and obviously those groups have attended that and have been involved in it.
Well, I think you've covered about everything, Steve. I appreciate your time and all the time you've put into this. You too, Morgan. Thank you for this.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, we appreciate it.
So before we move this on, now, are we talking about just creating a community improvement district, and we're not doing anything about taxation?
Correct. Yeah, consider a petition to establish a downtown Popper Bluff.
So once, once a community improvement district is established, though, is there any other approvals that need to be done before the 1-cent sales tax? It's listed as a sales use tax. Is that any other action needed before that is done?
There would have to be a board appointed by the mayor, and then that board then would make the decision in terms of levying that tax or not. They would have the ability to do so, but it doesn't automatically trigger a 1-cent sales tax.
Right, but since that was the intention of this CID, that once a board is established, there's like 99.9% chance that they would, they would implement the 1% use tax.
That would be, that would be the decision of the appointed members, yes.
Yeah.
I have one more question. That, what are the petitions sent to all the owners of businesses that we're facing right now? Or was it just to the property owners? We mailed everybody a letter, and then the attorney mailed one. I got a petition, but I didn't get a petition. I'm sorry.
Sir, come on up to the mic if you want to speak, please.
Do I need to fill out a form?
No, no, come on up, and just give your name and your address for the record.
I'm not trying to stir up anything, Steve, or anything, but Jeffrey Cannell, I own Minute Print in Popper Bluff here, 424 West Pine, if you want that address. And I didn't receive a letter or a petition, and the first notification I got was a notification of, I think, Ms. Wharton, as you mentioned, public input on the 18th. And so I had no clue that this was going on, and so that I seen, heard about, it was on the agenda for tonight, that's why I showed up tonight, to kind of hear what this was about. You know, because I know there's a couple of things in there on that five-year plan that I know is a little concerning to me, such as, you know, I don't know anything about exactly where the Vine Streets wanted to be shut down at, you know, for pedestrian traffic only. I received my stock shipments on Vine Street. You know, twice a week, I get an AT willer that comes down through there. And, you know, unless people wanted stopping on Pine Street to try to turn into my parking lot and back out onto Pine Street, you know, I can't have that shut down back there. You know, so these are things that are interested in me, that I want to kind of get more details on. You know, is that five-year plan solid, you know, put in place, things like that?
All right, I just want to say one thing to Jeff, though. The public hearing on the 18th, it'd probably be good if you came to that, it'd probably give you a lot more information.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I will. Like I said, I just was, you know, I seen it was on the agenda tonight, so I'm trying to get-
Yeah, absolutely.
Just trying to get more information, figure out where things are going, because, like I said, you know, I have never received a letter, you know, I don't think, you know, I've been visited by the downtown committee, anybody on it, once, you know, since I've owned the business. So, you know, and I'm not even sure where to even get in contact with them, you know, at this point.
Okay.
You know, except-
You know, what, I guess, the chamber?
Steve, you had something you'd like to add?
I just wanted to kind of talk about the process. So we mailed out to everyone, and I apologize, Jeff, if you didn't get anything. I mean, we all know the mail service isn't always the most reliable. And the ones that reached out to us were the ones that we approached to, obviously, if they reached out to us, they're interested in signing off on it. It also required us to take a notary to each one of these people, every single person that we got a petition from, that they signed it, we had to take a notary. I mean, we didn't have to, we could have just relied on them, but we didn't want to put that burden on them, so we had to take someone with us to get it notarized. So, but yeah, I know Jeff, I know Jeff very well, and I'd be more than happy to sit down and discuss. The five-year plan, those are things that are just, it's just like a strategic plan. It's out there, those are things we'd like to do, as far as the specifics of them, which buildings get demolished, which roads get closed for pedestrian only, or whatever. Those are things that will, you know, we're a long way from, from getting that done. It would require things through the city council, it would require citizens' input- require things through the city council, it would require citizens' input, obviously, there's no way in the world we'd wanna do something that would harm any of our businesses downtown.
It's in the package.
Yeah, it's, you know, I mean, it's Myrtles, Debbie Slager from Myrtles, it's Francisco, it's Nathan Mauer, it's those, those folks that, that have businesses down there, the folks that own Mimi's, those are the folks that have good vibrant businesses, the Halfords, those folks.
Yeah, come on up. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Morgan Taylor, 3690 McLean Drive. I'd just like to speak, I've been on a few of the CID boards, I actually helped implement the one on Sycamore.
Sycamore.
Yeah. They were great for us, you know, it's a political subdivision that you're really able to get a lot done. I think it would be great for the downtown area, and one good thing about it, and I don't know if, I'm sure most of y'all know, but anybody that doesn't, it can only be used on exterior, so you don't have to worry about somebody getting on this board and trying to buddy up and renovate the--
As far as I know, still exterior only, correct?
Yeah, so this is only streets outside of buildings, this is stuff that John Q. Public's gonna be seeing. I am strongly for it. I own a building downtown, it's not in great shape, but I'm currently under contract with somebody that's gonna put in more of an entertainment retail place in it, and I think it would be a huge addition, so, and if anybody would like to talk to me, I can--
I was familiar with the Sycamore one, is the reason I mentioned--
Right.
Because it's in my ward.
Right. Yeah, and, and I know that you had concerns about it when we initially put it in, and since that, have you had any issues?
No, no.
I mean, everybody kinda, and I know you're just taking care of your ward--
Right.
And I respect that, I admire it, but I don't think any of the people really noticed another 1%, as far as anybody, you know, if, if the city was to put a 1% sales tax increase on the ballot, everybody in the city could vote for it, and no one in the downtown area could vote yes. None of the business owners, none of the property owners could vote yes, and it'd still be passed, they would still have to put that 1% onto their customers, but would see no progress from it, so, strongly for it.
Any more questions for Mr. Taylor? Thank you, appreciate it.
One more comment, just on the, not with you--
You're good, thank you.
Just the city services, it alluded in the, in the description here that certain things that the city takes care of, like sidewalks, streets, streetlights, and that type of thing, would be maintained by, by the city, but, or it seems like they should be maintained by the city, but it seems like some of those would be taken over by the CID. Is that, is that potential?
No, the, I mean, the CID would have no mechanism with which to maintain improvements, you know, certainly, if, you know, if sidewalks are resurfaced or improved with those dollars, you know, the city, if it's a city street, if it's a city sidewalk, I mean, it's gonna be maintained by the city, so there, we, I mean, the city would lose no control over, over that infrastructure, it would be improved with those proceeds.
So, the, if the CID did improve those, say, streetlights, then those would probably be maintained by the CID, or would that transfer over to the city?
No, the, the, the city would, would maintain those.
Oops, I'm sorry? Yeah, come on up.
Stephanie Nobby, I own four buildings downtown, one of them which was on their report of being god-awful ugly, it's on the agenda to fix. Morgan and I have talked about this, I've talked to Steve about this, and I've talked to a few council members and other people. I am totally for the 1%. I think we need a lot of help down there, but I also think that once this board is formed, there are other options and other things to also help build our downtown to where there's more businesses down there. And so I think it's gonna be collectively, everybody working together, and hearing everybody out to help increase our storefronts down there. Main Street has a lot of empty storefronts, and there's lots of things that could be due to fill those spaces, but we just need help with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think what, what I thought of when I first heard this, it was like, this is, this is kind of a, it's an additional 1% sales tax, use tax is what they're calling it, sales and use tax, and for the downtown, and I, I would like to see a kind of more of a carrot and stick type of approach, I mean, this is more of the stick, I mean, why would somebody go downtown and pay a, you know, higher sales tax to buy something downtown when they could buy it somewhere else for less tax? It seems like, you know, if it's, everything being equal, you're gonna go someplace else, and that's, that's more of a stick than a carrot, you know, and--
Yeah, but if the, if the 1% does what it's intended to do with the businesses, growing the businesses, making a nicer place to visit, the 1% is gonna be a small issue for what people are looking for, to get out of that 1%. I think the positives outweigh the negatives by a large margin.
Yeah, I'm not arguing against the CID, I'm just saying that, that it seems like it's, it's a one-sided issue with the, with the CID.
Understand.
It seems like the city should consider some other incentive instead of a disincentive that, to help this, you know, to get more businesses down there, because if you have more businesses down there, you're gonna generate more revenue, and you're gonna, that revenue will actually do what the CID wants, you know, to get done, but, you know, if, if it's a disincentive with no incentive associated with it, there might be less traffic down there, and it, it might not work out so well. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, I think we've covered everything. I'd entertain a motion to move this.
And the motion is, what, to--
Well, it's to move it to the next level.
To have a public hearing.
To have a public hearing, let the public have their say.
On the 18th?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, it needs to be well-advertised and get input from the public, I'd make that motion.
So, we have a motion, do we have a second? I can make this up. I'll make the second. Roll call? Let's have a roll call vote on this.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilman Morton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
No.
Councilman DePew?
Yeah.
Yes. All right, motion carried. Item D, the city council consider amendment to section 120 dot 240, employment of immediate relatives of the code of ordinances, manager Nodelle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This amendment will allow policy to, to permit family members to be employed in the same city department so long as the currently-employed relative is in no direct supervisory, appointing, removing, disciplinary, performance evaluating, conflicting, or auditing role. In the difficult labor market that we encounter in this, in this current time, quality applicants would be turned away due to existing policy. We know that we have had over the years a number of second and even third-generation police officers and firefighters, families that pride themselves on service to the city of Popper Bluff in various capacities, and, you know, we want quality applicants to be considered, and this proposed amendment will align our policy with the same policy that's used by the state of Missouri, as well as other municipalities when it comes to hiring of relatives. Thank you.
I've got one question, I'm sure you're telling how, if, you know, the department manager, or a guy gets promoted to a supervisor, and he has a son or a nephew working, do they, do they have split them up?
Yeah, yeah, no, whether, you know, whether at the time of a hire, or, you know, at a later time of a promotion transfer, that would have to be taken into consideration because that would violate the ordinance, just as it would for a new hire.
So, is this the exact same wording as what the state is using?
It is, I wouldn't say it's 100% the same, but the, the actual effect of it is the same. Obviously, you know, state manuals as well, you know, don't fit our ordinances perfectly, and vice versa, but the, the effect is the same.
And in relation to what Councilman DePew said, it seems like it may, may cause some difficulty in advancement if you have multiple family members in one department, so would that restrict the, the one person that's applying for a supervisory job because, say, his son or nephew or whatever is, is in the same department at the same rate that he is currently, would he be denied advancement, or would the, like I say, would, would he not be considered, or would his--
Well, it would depend on the position, because the chain of supervision, the unit, you know, the division that they are into, you know, that, that would be a decision that could be made by those making the hiring decision. However, you know, we are, it would not be our, our intent to see this ordinance violated, you know, whether, whether with a new hire or with a promotion, and that, and the same would be true today. This just simply allows for these additional hires to be considered.
You don't see any downside to this?
I do not.
Okay.
I move that we, I make a motion, we move this to the voting session, the 18th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the city council consider accepting a donation of property located at the northeast corner of China and Velma Streets and owned by Spire Missouri, Inc. Manager Nodelle?
Yes, this has been under consideration for quite some time. This is a fenced and gated lot that Spire has no further use for. The street department is in need of additional storage space, and again, this is fenced and gated and, and ready, ready for their use, and they desire this property to store equipment, to free up space at existing facilities. Thank you.
I'm gonna say something here. I kind of apologized for not knowing exactly where this lot is, but is this the same lot that we discussed before, that's on that corner?
At the end of China or Velma?
Yes, okay, 'cause I, I thought we'd already resolved that, but apparently not.
You're thinking about the one out Hillsdale?
No, no, it's this one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the city council consider an amendment to the fiscal year 2025 budget, manager Nodelle?
Yes, you know, speaking, speaking along the lines of our audit findings earlier today, and, you know, making sure that our budget does reflect monies in as well as expenditures, we would, this amendment reflects the approval of the FEMA disaster bridge loan and the ability to expend funds thereon, so we would, we would ask for that approval.
I would entertain a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, the city council consider a proposed ordinance establishing procedures for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officers, manager Nodelle?
Yes, the, the city's current conflict of interest ordinance expires in, in September, and we are required to have that on the books as per the Missouri Ethics Commission, so this remove, this renewal is necessary to satisfy those state requirements, the language from the ordinance of the past two years is unchanged. This is a renewal. Thank you.
Does this need to be renewed annually, then?
I believe in Clerk Phelps, I believe it's every two years.
Is this to be renewed for two years, so?
Yes. Yeah, the previous ordinance that is expiring was a two-year ordinance, this is a two-year--
Oh, okay, it sounded like--
It's a rollover, basically.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounded like it was two, two annuals.
Second.
Did I hear a second over there?
Yes.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, the city council consider amendment number one to the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission State Block Grant Agreement Relative to Project Number 25 dash 075A dash one Airport Improvement Program. Mr. Gary Pride to present.
This'll go, this'll go pretty quick. As most of you, as most of you guys know, I've got a lesser responsibility out there now, and I oversee some of the projects and development and stuff that's going on out at the airport, and one of those issues is an amendment. It's the, it's the buzzword of the night, and it's a, basically, the same thing as a change order. Current project that's going on, we have various funding streams that the airport uses, some of it's state, federal money, but it's all overseen by MoDOT Aviation that comes through us, and one of those projects, the, they can vary on those funding streams, sometimes they're 100% money, sometimes they're 90%, 95%, it has a city match. So, in the short version of what's happened here, MoDOT changed from the funding stream that they were using to partially using from a different funding stream that was 100% money. So, what that change order, if you wanna use that phrase for this, is what's actually occurring, there is a less commitment of money from the city's match to this project that's currently going on. The city didn't have much responsibility, anyway. It was only $1,923 that was gonna be the city's match. That has been reduced to $1,569, so basically a $400 savings to the city, but it's merely a clerical, clerical issue where they're pulling from some of the funding from 100% money rather than the 90% that they were using. That's it in a nutshell.
Well, that sounds like the easiest no-brainer of the night.
Works for me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item A, our action required item, bill number 8642, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for the purchase of city-owned property located on Highway 53.
Motion for first three reading of bill number 8642.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the sale of real estate located on Highway 53 in Butler County and owned by the city of Popper Bluff to Donna Buehler.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call Clerk Phelps? Do we got one more reading on that? Oh, it was a resolution, no. No, it's a bill, I'm sorry, I was thinking it was a resolution, but it is a bill. All right, second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the sale of real estate located on Highway 53 in Butler County and owned by the city of Popper Bluff to Donna Buehler.
Any questions or discussion? Are you gonna say? I thought I heard you, Barbara kinda seconded it.
I was getting ready to.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Roll call Clerk Phelps?
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilman Morton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yeah.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Yes. Bill number 8642 has been adopted. Item nine, our city managers report, manager Nodelle?
Yes, I'll try to keep this short and sweet, since we've had a fairly long meeting, but I will report that city staff had our FEMA recovery scoping meeting this morning. FEMA staff are working closely with us at City Hall as we submit our expenses for reimbursement, and they were very complimentary of the city's response to the tornado and preliminary submission efforts. Tremendous credit goes to Lori Phelps for being very organized and ensuring that the accounting side is in great shape. We also had our second city code enforcement working group meeting today, and look forward to submitting a detailed report with recommendations to this council in September. Empower Missouri, which is a statewide organization that focuses on the economic security and well-being of all citizens, held a town hall in Popper Bluff focused on food insecurity and available resources for citizens. Food insecurity is a very real challenge, especially among senior citizens and children, and we don't want anyone-- and we don't want anyone in Popper Bluff to be hungry or malnourished. We are fortunate to have many organizations here in the city that work together to be responsive to those needs, and we support those efforts. Finally, let me remind everyone that the first day of fall classes at Three Rivers College is August the 18th, and the first day of school for Popper Bluff R1 is August 20th. Many of our parochial schools will be starting around the same time as well, and we will certainly see an increase in traffic throughout our community when schools are in session, and I encourage all motorists to be watchful and attentive for school buses, as we want this to be a safe and successful school year here in Popper Bluff. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Nodelle, any other comments? There's no further business to come before the council, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.